This conference will now be recorded.
I would rather be saying, it's all right to.
I mean, it's fine to have something you don't have to have as long as you have something you do have to have, right?
Yeah.
And I think it looks better in the application to say there's a town meeting.
Well, I thought, the thing is, and I think rightfully so, but it's also good to remove.
Maybe it's a bit of an obvious.
Yeah, we'll call, we'll throw it, call the order, the select board at 6:00 PM, we have all three members present here. Eric Town Hall and Elson, we're joined by the Finance Committee, which is Frank and I live in.
Or two thirds of an hour.
Um, so the first item on the agenda is the budget, is the budget and any outstanding items. I only am aware of one change and then from last time we met and then one item that was outstanding, um, which would be a small chain in the ballpark, Melissa and the treasurer or accountant?
The accountant.
The accountant work together and the wording is during the current fiscal year 23. I mean, it's coming out of free cash, as long as it comes out of free cash, if we had a special town meeting, it would be available right away. Um, that would allot, that would make money available the day of town meeting or the day after, rather than July 1st. Are there any questions?
Oh, I thought we were gonna see the presentation by them tomorrow, let's see if they were including it or not.
They're signing the warrant tonight, so it has to go on the warrant.
Oh, whether we do it or not.
Yeah.
We can all pull it, but we can't put it back in.
That's what I, that's what I just meant, okay, now I understand.
Yeah, so if there's no funding about that. Um, the other item was the $30,000 to pay for capital improvements on the fire company property.
Yes.
So I did not hear back from the account, but I did hear back from the town council and I believe I for, for, we're missing everybody. Um, her concerns seem to be you, the town can appropriate funds for capital improvements on a private building, but her primary, her main concern was that the improvements effectuate a public purpose and also that the town has a long-term lease, so that there's some security that they will continue to serve a public purpose rather than a private purpose.
So where does that leave it?
It leaves us needing to make a new lease, that is my thought.
Yeah, I think they need to release the Finance Committee, it shouldn't be on the list. Cause you're not gonna do a lease by then, he has $60,000 already warrants sitting on the books. He has not said anything's in the pipeline. You're a lawyer and our legal is saying, you know, raising a red flag saying a month-to-month, don't deal with a month-to-month lease. I mean, I, you know, it's not that we don't want to support the fire department, it's just it's not business, it's town business to do it that way.
And it's not, and it's not eminently ready to be spent, like they don't need to let the ball go up for the season, like there's no plan to spend it in like.
But he's got $60,000 under warrant for capital improvements that are on the books now.
Forty-five of it pegged, leaving fifteen simmer.
For what, for forty-five thousand?
Right, and then this next third was gonna add to that to be the next part of their endeavor, so. But you're kind of in the right part here, maybe this year.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna be.
Till we get the math straighted out.
Yeah, but I think the other thing is that some of it is open-ended, you know, the town votes on a warrant that allows your discretion there with spending. When it, when we say vote on, do you want a lease card, that's very specific. Should it be that general? I don't know, there should be at least a debate about it.
Well, that's the debate, who decided that our council has stated that we shouldn't do it?
Well, I think what the council stated was that you should have a long-term agreement.
Right, and in the interim, we don't have that.
And so, but that, you know, that would be up to the fire to come, to come to the select board and say, let's do a, a long-term lease, so what does that look like?
And if it, tonight's the night that this either flies.
I, I don't think it's actually a warrant, to my opinion, I wouldn't do it, cause you'd be going against the advice of your legal counsel.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Don Culver.
The creation document of the fire department says expressly that if they cease to become
Company.
A fire, a fire property becomes the town's automatically, was council aware of that?
I, I think.
Good question.
If I have to answer the question. Because if she wasn't, she ought to be aware of it, because I think that would change your opinion, it might blow you off.
Seems likely.
I mean, the truth is, the town owns that firehouse, is the reality.
Well, I mean, every nonprofit has to have somewhere that their property goes if they dissolve the nonprofit profit, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think sometimes it's the town, regardless of situations like this.
Well, I.
Not usually.
Well, no, no, no.
This is specifically in the documents that it.
It reverts, but nonprofits have to have a, because of their nonprofit status, and I might know more, but I know a lot about nonprofits, they have to be able to give it to someone who has the same charitable, it has to go to someplace that's charitable, since they didn't pay taxes all those years in the same kind of purpose, or it's not transferable or something like that. But I, I would raise the question, Don, that while that is true, the, the, the question still remains that allocating $30,000 for unspecified items, even if, if that part is true and it reversed us long-term, we do not have a lease to ensure that, or to have, you know, any kind of administration or oversight about it now in the short term, and allocating $30,000, you know, kind of like without a plan, given the tightness of the budget this year is a prudent option, because we do want to support them and we want to figure out long-term plan, but we want to go through the capital process and, you know, uh, you know, make sure there's a lease and everything, you know, if, even if it's not reverting to us eminently, that we understand where those $10,000 are going.
Pay this, show up this 60th year.
Well, other concern, Donna, happens at the lease, the current lease states that the fire company is responsible for repairs, I believe.
There's another intervening factor, is it intervening, the, the transportation?
Let's finish this conversation before we move on.
One more on the fire company, so previous councils have told you that you could give this money, so I just wanted to throw that up there, cause I wasn't here for the original discussion.
Well, Donna didn't say you can never give, she said you can spend public funds to, on the private property, but because of the anti-aid, anti-aid amendment, it should clearly effectuate a public purpose and there should be a long-term lease on the property.
So their articles of organization say upon the dissolution of the corporation, the board of directors shall, after paying or making provision for the payment of all the liabilities of the corporation, dispose of all the assets of the corporation exclusively for the purpose of the corporation by transfer to the town of Monterey.
Which is a dissolution, it's not an operating.
But we also have a lease that did, did lay out those projects.
What happens if you have a lease, that the lease expires, but you're going month-to-month, like on a regular rental, you would, the lease
Right.
doesn't hold, but the terms hold, don't they? Like, you, you've done a deposit, say, right?
All the terms continue.
All the terms continue, even though it's month-to-month, so essentially that, even though it's expired, is continuing even though we don't have any lease.
I don't know.
That was my point before.
Well, that one didn't say that it goes month-to-month.
That's traditional.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can pull up, the, the fire department one does say that all the.
So, so I guess the question is, if what Don brought up, does that change the council's opinion? So can we call the council now and figure that out?
It's very, it's very well possible if it's over.
I mean, cause that seems to be the, I mean, because if, if we didn't know that, we would kind of go in the long, little way that the Finance Committee was thinking. But if this is a big determinant, unless you want to go away, the Finance Committee was thinking to, you know, to bring this into line and figure out what we're moving forward and.
So the term of the lease says that the lease shall become a month-to-month tenancy with all other provisions of the lease in full and worsen effect.
And if they terminated, if they both terminated the lease, then you have no place, you no place to put the fire engines and all the equipment, and then they couldn't function as a fire company, so automatically become the town, this, this building is in every real sense the town, and the public interest is, of course, you have to maintain it, cause you need it to keep the fire, your fire engines and fire equipment somewhere. So that's the, of the public purpose.
Yes, but, but we're also saying, when was the fire house redone, three years ago, four years ago? I mean, it wasn't six years ago.
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
It's been within the last five years.
Yeah, but let me add one other thing, and, and that is, it sounds like two issues.
Why are we redoing the redo? I, I think that would be.
Well, I think, I think that.
They didn't redo the kitchen at the time.
Finishing, finishing the redo.
Or were finishing the redo.
The kitchen, if you've been in there, only has a.
It was a big kitchen, now it's kind of a.
It's a big kitchen now, but it's missing the cooking facilities, it's missing, it needs a refrigerator.
Fifty thousand mil.
So I'll call town council on speaker.
Okay.
Um, if that works.
Can I just say one more thing? It sounded, it sounded like you were talking about whether you, the town should specify what the money is used for this year. Right. That's a total, that's a separate question. Cause we do it for everything else. I understand, that's entirely separate, whether you can spend the money. Right.
Maybe.
Those clarity, where the cash is going.
Right. We, we're looking, yeah, we don't practice fiscally to allocate money without having a plan.
In place for that.
Send her a quick email and ask if she, if there's any issue, cause she may get her email back.
You know, I may have a different opinion if they wa, but they're quasi, so we don't manage them.
Or send her a mail to say, is there any chance?
And we have how much of the money, 197?
I don't, it's Justin.
We already have 197.
What? Um, is there any chance that you can speak with the, we have the select board and Finance Committee, is there any chance that you can speak with us for a few minutes right now on speakerphone? All right, thank you, what do you want to speak now? Okay, so, do you, do you wanna ask the question?
Well, first, I think we need to talk about the lease that exists.
So Donna, so Donna, the, the, the subject matter at hand was the fire company lease that I emailed you about late last week.
Yep.
Um, and I think the question at hand, you're familiar with the lease and the warrant article that's proposed. The question at hand is, um, if we want, due to the anti-aid amendment, we want to make sure that the money, if it's public money, is effectuating a public purpose and that there's a long-term agreement to ensure that not only effectuate the public purpose now, but it does going into the future. Um, it's been brought up that the fire company's nonprofit documents of the corporation have a clause that in, when, and if, if the fire company dissolves, the property would be transferred to the town of Monterey, and there's a question of whether that in, in some ways ensures long-term, uh, whether that ensures long-term public purpose based on these capital improvements money, capital improvement money.
Secondarily, although the lease has, I guess, expired its term, the original lease did specify that at the end of the term it would continue, it would go month-to-month and it would continue un, until it was otherwise changed, including all the other terms of the lease.
Right, right, so the, the month-to-month is, is a problem, because that really doesn't support putting capital improvements in a property that is owned by a private entity, and it really doesn't matter if it's a private or, I'm sorry, a profit or nonprofit for this purpose, for the anti-aid provision purposes, um, so the fact that, I guess, at some point, if the company dissolves, the property will go to the town is a help. My understanding, though, is that this company's been around for decades and I don't, there's much of a reason to believe that that contingency is gonna come true anytime soon.
So if, if you were to just, um, go ahead and issue a new lease with how long a term, should it have five, 10 years?
Well, so then you get into procurement issues, because if you're gonna lease property, uh, you know, you've got issues under chapter 30B that you have to follow. They're not horrible, they're not, they're not hard to beat, but we would have to go through those steps. So what I'd recommend is that we have the appropriation, but we not actually turn the money over until we get, uh, until we follow this, the hoops through the state statute for, for procurement and get a new lease in place.
Which doesn't seem problematic to me, given that there are no immediate plans to actually use that money, we're just beholding.
And part of the new lease could actually include that the capital improvements be stipulated, stipulated, including expected date of completion and go through the town's capital plan process that we have to finalize.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for Donna?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Donna.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, have a good night, everybody.
I mean, that seems like it solves the most problems the most easily, the money's just not distributed until the lease is completed and all the leases are done.
How do we, um, so, this is something that would come through many times, where I'm like, well, why don't we just allocate the money, but not give it to them? And the answer is always, well, once it passes the warrant, it's their money, remember I wanted to do that with another department or something? With the police car or something, like not spend it, not put in their things, but not spend it, and I was told, once you do it, you have to do it. Once it's in there, that department can spend it, it's not up to us or something.
Well, they still have to follow the procurement laws or whatever, like for the, for the police cruiser, and the select board has to sign off on the warrant to release the funds. So if they don't sign off on it majority, funds don't care for the lease.
After the warrant.
Different warrant, so town meeting warrant approves it for them to be able to try and spend it. So if I write, if I say I wanna spend $30,000 on, you know, fixing the stairs or whatever, and I put in for a check, the treasurer's gonna make the check, but these three have to sign a weekly warrant saying, go ahead and release the check.
So the same thing like the police cruiser, we put the money in, but we can delay it six months or whenever we want, right?
And I think the issue was the cruiser actually was that the money has to be allocated before it can go through the procurement process.
Yes, that was, so, but we can delay the procurement process, so we, okay, if we don't want to spend the money, okay, that clarifies that, thank you.
Are we good then?
I, I do for clarity, once it's approved, we, and it goes through the proper channels, we can't stop it from being used. So understand the difference.
I know, yeah. You mean, once we approve the fire warrant money?
Uh huh.
That's what I'm saying, so how are we gonna hold it back?
We can just, you can stop it if they're not following, like if you put a stipulation on.
Correct.
But if they go.
But if they do everything they're supposed to, they can't stop it.
Right.
Right, so that's what'll make, make certain that you understand.
But do you.
So like the police cruiser, you couldn't delay just because you wanted to delay it. If they went through the proper bidding process and it was approved at town meeting, they would have.
Right, and we can advise them, cannot put it until January, but if they can do it before, we don't, we can't, right?
So do you write that in the, with the stipulation?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what was the, what was the other question?
Well, so the fire, there was already stipulations in the lease, cause someone mentioned about like future planning for future improvements, there was already stipulation in the lease that the town would be provided a plan for future improvements.
Well.
And there is a list, to a degree, which is not very specific.
There's four items they have.
I think the warrant reads that in order for lists to be, come to fruition, we're gonna approve the funding, but in the interim, they're gonna supply us with the lease that the town is happy with and the fire company is happy with.
Fire is spending the money that.
They fire anything, and all future capital improvements that run through the board.
Go through the capital processes.
All future capital do you run through the board with a warrant vote on them, or do you, is it a select board decision?
Well, it would be just like anybody coming to the Finance Committee and the Select Board, put something on next.
Okay, okay. It was definitely the normal capital procedure.
Right, but here's this great opportunity for you guys to write that into their contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we had to put it on the warrant, so I'm gonna propose some language.
Yes.
Let's see if we think this works, uh, so it's Article 17, we see that the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 or another sum for free cash to pay for the capital improvements on the fire company property contingent upon the issuance of a new lease and of, and.
Who issued?
Fire approval of the improvement project by the select board.
Is it agreement on a new list, or issuing?
I don't really know if you need to go there, just maybe back that up to simplify it, that, you know, basically, that's, that's afterwards, I think.
But if you're saying, once we, they approve it, we have no ability to stop the issuance of the money, and that's the concern, then the only way to fix that is to put language in the passage.
No, you, you back it up, you further, click, 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 you don't allow any of the money to go until the new contract is signed, and that contract has all the provisions we want, that's the town.
Oh, the lease. So, oh, do we issue the lease card, or they, who is it?
No, 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 it's a negotiated, it's a negotiated.
So until a new lease is negotiated in time, by, by both parties.
Yeah, that part is.
Yes.
The agreement satisfied, the completion of a new, long-term lease.
Long-term lease.
Between the town and the company, right?
And then during that lease negotiation process, that's when you.
That's good. I can move that, okay. No, yeah, I hear you.
I like that.
Can I ask one more question?
Keeps it.
Yes.
Simple.
Yeah.
Uh, Don Culver.
I, I'm surprised to hear that simply cause the town votes to appropriate funding for something, that the select board has to pay it. And I think that's a legal question which you, which you, that, that you have to spend, that you ought to ask council, because suppose, for example, you appropriate for a police car, and then tomorrow, I walk in with a check for $50,000 as a citizen and say, here's for the police car.
Thank you.
Are you not?
Thank you, the letter's in the mail.
No, but, but think about that.
That's why I raised the question.
You wouldn't have to buy another car.
Just because you're obligated for it, but that's where the wording is, right?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure of the answer to this, but I, I, I think it's something to ask council. The mere fact that the town meeting approves money, does that require, no matter what happens, that the select board actually approve the pain, the expenditure? Suppose there's, there's a flood, suppose there's something happen, I mean, I, I don't think it's automatic, I could be wrong, but I wish you'd ask council.
There's certainly been times that we didn't spend the money that we appropriated.
I think the point I was trying to make was that you just couldn't say you're not gonna approve it because you don't want to.
Right, right, actually.
Because without me.
Yeah, but I just.
Right, so you're thinking to put out my question, Don, I thought that.
The other, the other thing to take into.
Or question I asked.
The other. And this, Melissa's, right, we get the warrant every week, but, but most time the work has been done. So if we say, well, we're not gonna pay the check.
Right, but.
It puts us in a, right, if the work's already been done.
But that's, that goes to the very nature of the question, so like if the department is under the town, it's very clear that we manage them, then it, you know, there should be a relationship about how the work gets done and if it needs to get done. But if it's a quasi and we don't manage them, it's not clear the timing of those issues, and I understand that what we said before, as long as they meet all the mandates that we set out in the process and we actually follow, that we have to sign it, but that does, um, I guess, I guess the, that makes the answer yes. Once it's in the warrant, you have to spend it, and, and, you know, it, it.
But not if we say contingent upon.
But not in this case, it's the whole warrant, maybe the whole warrant if it contingent.
That's personally, I don't believe that, but, but I would.
Do we need it, or?
No, what I'm saying is just ask council.
Yeah.
Is the assumption that authorization by the town meeting requires in all circumstances that you have to actually spend that money? Or can you change your mind?
The thing is, if we're issuing the money to another party. It's not like we're, we're, it's like if we say $40,000 for improvements to town hall, we're making the hall which improvements to make. But if we're saying $51,000 to SBAS, we're committing those monies for a particular contract that we're agreeing to with them.
Well, you're saying, I don't think.
If we don't pay them, then they don't give us the service.
Well, I'm, well, that's, that, that of course is true, but you have to change your mind about whether you need that service.
Uh, that's true.
So. I, if, if it's all right with everyone here, I think we have a couple more questions for Donna, I hope she picks up.
I'm sorry. That was second.
I have the wording that Susan provided more or less, contingent on the agreement to a new lease between the town and the company.
That works for me.
Contingent is a great word here, and I think it should be in the whole warrant, the warrant is contingent.
I mean, I think.
That's thank you.
I think I need to.
I have a sum for free cash to pay for the capital improvements.
On the fire company.
Property.
Contingent on the agreement to a new lease between the town and the.
Make them certain word, not put in there.
What, what did you put in there, Scott?
Um, no money framework, uh, no, just, well, it was the same wording, do you have that, Frank? Right up till the end where it says, or take any, contingent upon signing of a new long-term lease.
Between the town and the fire.
Yeah, I would say we should, town fire, be absolutely clear, like Tom Cruise crystal. Oh, call me back now?
Okay, because I don't know, that's kind of an interesting thing, I don't know, it's a very.
Well, that's why I've been asking you the question, for, it was very clear. She's like, all right, here, I already spoke to those nuts. I already spoke to those white nuts today.
You could also email her.
Oh, I have to email the strike.
Yeah, yeah, she knows the time of the warrant, I mean, that's not so important.
Donna.
Hi, Donna, it's Ju, it's Justin again. Well, how would, how do you feel about the addition of, to that article, a contingency with the wording contingent upon the agreement to a new lease between the town and the company?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Sounds legal?
Yes, it sounds very legal.
Okay, thank you, and I think there was one other question, I'm not sure that it needs to be asked anymore. Oh.
Yeah, we got it.
It's a big question, and you may, you may not be able to answer now, but once, once the town meeting approves money to be spent, to what, to what degree, if any, can the select board or other entities in town stop that expenditure? So, after it's been approved at town meeting, could the select board say, we're not gonna release that $30,000?
Yes, yes.
And what, does it, does there have to be a basis, or is it just with any, for any reason or no reason at all?
Yeah, it's within your discretion, town meeting just appropriates the money, and it's up to you guys to decide whether to actually spend the money. That, that discretion always resides in the department or board or committee that is the one in charge of the appropriation. So for example, you know, just because you appropriate $20,000 to the planning department, doesn't mean the planning department will go out and spend it all.
So, but could the select board stop the planning department, and I think the more pressing question, and I'm sorry asking for asking tangential on first, but, um, in this case, since the recipient of the money is the fire company or people contracting with the fire company, would it be the select board's decision?
Yes.
Because, I mean, the company's not a town department.
Exactly.
And, and just to complicate that further, so if it is a town department like Parks, and they were allocated ARPA funds, and they, could the select board stop them spending those amount of funds, I'm not saying you should.
Well, don't, don't confuse it with ARPA fund, because that was approval by the select board, so if, if the Parks got $10,000 to fix a ball field and they go out and do it, can the, can the select board stop that?
Whoa, 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 Melissa, no, it is exactly that question, because they, they allocated, can't be stopped.
No, it's not, we can do it if we allocate it, but probably about town meeting, right, it's a separation.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, but you're comfortable with the, with the addition of wording contingent upon the agreement to a new lease between the town and the company?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, uh, when we get to the motion, I'm gonna add upon terms and conditions, uh, except. And and uh, when we get to the motion, I'm gonna add upon terms and conditions uh acceptable to the select board. But you don't need to worry about that for the article.
But we don't, we don't do the motion.
Uh, should we put, I mean, typically, Donna, the the it, the articles are moved. By someone simply saying, I I moved it and automatically to see if the town, to see if is kind of deleted automatically? And or take any other action relative thereto and or any other sum is kind of deleted without. Without anyone saying so, it's just assumed.
Okay.
So should we add that in right now?
Yeah, so I, when you say contingent upon the execution of the new lease. I think like. Contingent upon uh a new lease upon terms and conditions acceptable to the select board.
Between, uh, so I I have contingent upon the execution of a new lease agreement between the town and the company conditional?
If it's just upon terms and conditions.
Upon.
Or say with with terms and conditions acceptable to the select board.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Hopefully that's it for tonight, we're just trying to get the warrant finished.
Oh, no, call me back if you get it.
Go to offer.
Thank, thank you, Donna.
Okay.
Okay, so the article will now read, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars or any other sum for free cash to pay for capital improvements on the fire company. Property contingent upon the execution of a new lease agreement between the town and the company. With terms and conditions acceptable to the select board or take any other action relative thereto.
Second, yeah. Um, or do we have to, is it really?
We have, uh, all in favor of.
It's a shoebag.
In the town, the town's board.
Of the wording article, uh, yes, and yes, that's unanimous, yes.
Does this make you guys vote differently, do we wanna change what the finance committee supports here?
What in effect?
The finance committee does not support approval of this Article three zero.
Well, there's one to vote, I I I.
You can say two.
Two what?
Two and one.
Uh, I I mean, I I vote, I I'm glad it's a long term lease.
Me too, I would change, I would change to we support it for two.
So the, so the finance committee does support the article as it's written?
As it's rewritten.
As it's rewritten, then the contingent's made, yeah.
Actually, it was zeros, Michelle doesn't know how it's rewritten, because she actually.
That's a really, that's a tricky question, I don't know, but yeah, I don't know.
I'd say it's two zero because she didn't vote on the other one. One and she'll have a chance to express herself.
Yeah, at the meeting, that's good.
And you guys support it unanimously or?
Yes, maybe we all voted yes, yes. Okay, so. And then did anyone else have other? Um, budget items, budget question.
Just the, do we wanna raise the transfer station?
Uh, the transfer station.
I know last week Article nineteen is, uh. Frank, I know, Jaws.
Oh, dear.
Or Lucette. Is that something?
Mickey's on one.
I I mean, I I like the hand, vote or.
Yeah. Enjoy. And then the new issue, what's the transfer?
What number is it?
It's not, it's an operational issue.
It's not, yeah, can you go through the rest of them, go to twenty three and is it okay for me to?
Okay.
Let's go to that reword, the rewording is from the accountant. He wanted to put the amount in there that we've collected so far.
That's the only change already.
That, yeah.
Yeah. From certified free cash, yeah, I have no problem, I think there's an extra space after the money, but I could be wrong.
So this is saying that it's going into the whatever they said, instead of going to whatever we want.
What?
Well, okay, the other thing is, I mean, we don't, we can't use a Bible and want, we actually have to use it hopefully while you're covering.
I have to use it. Okay, right. We have to use it for the purpose for which it was intended. Right, again, our ambulance.
Then I would like to make it, we do a twenty six, twenty six, yeah, I'm gonna say I'd like to see twenty six there.
Do we put twenty six back?
Yeah, so I, the, my reasoning was, um, just that Donna's, I deleted a bunch of articles that she, or. Three or four articles that she said we didn't read and she said. Let me find the wording, so not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but. So, but Article twenty three is depending if you get the money, if we don't get the money.
We've gotten it, that's the money we've gotten.
That's the amount we received.
There was a commitment, what, for the next five years?
Okay, all right, as long as it's rece, it should be received every year, now received, we shouldn't be out. I'm just saying, we say that.
So, uh, Sue, you wanted Article twenty six to get reinserted?
Yeah.
Why was it taken out?
Because Donna said we didn't have to have it on there, but I don't see any reason not to have it on there.
Well, I think it's just, we, there's a, there's some articles that kind of carry over year to year.
Right.
And it's nice to have just what we need to have, and there's other. I, if, if we need to have a town meeting approval to apply for and receive a grant, I absolutely want that, right? I don't wanna put us in jeopardy of getting that approval, and I don't think it's worth taking the risk if we think it's a risk.
I know we needed it in the past, so.
Leave it in.
It just. She just said, this is not, it is not necessary for town meeting to authorize the select board to apply for, except can expend a amount for its grant, this article is unnecessary. Uh, as she said, with two other bargaining articles in the chapter ninety, but I.
And those came out, I did confirm.
Yeah. So you're ready to leave or we don't need to protect that?
I confirmed on the other ones, with chapter ninety and the law only.
But we're not sure about that word, so let's leave it in and we should put it on the list to find out for sure, so that we don't have to do it every year as we don't. Oh, okay.
And someone can explain twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, if there are questions?
Yes, I absolutely can, and I'll, I'll come with numbers in case people wanna talk about it, and there's only two towns in South County anyway, it's just Egramont and Barrington, right?
Okay, there are two, there are two towns.
There are way too many.
Exactly, that there are. We'd be on, we'd be in the forefront.
I don't know who else is gonna put it on there for this year, but I I just know who's already put it. And they're all pretty new, right, like it's only within the last.
Yeah.
Year, like, oh, two years.
And then that'll.
Egramont.
Egramont was last year and Red Barrington, I think, was the year before.
Yeah, and, um, I'll put it right up, but we have a revenue chart, we're gonna give them a budget, we finished, we probably pretty much shows what our revenue stays. Very important.
So I have a question about how the warrant, the budget's going to appear in the warrant.
Do we finish all of the articles before we do?
Well, they're not here for the articles.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're just here for the budget.
Okay.
I mean, they can and shouldn't, I mean, they have no business on.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Um.
Pretty good.
I was hungry.
That gets, yeah.
But just as the budget's going to appear, we added into our copy the the percentage of each line, are we keeping that in or no?
I like it.
The only concern that I had is anytime there's a a new line or we're going down to zero, it kind of does the weird data.
The division thing, I was, I was gonna just delete that part of it, I can't help but a formula in there.
NNA or?
Did you put a formula in?
Yeah, it it just comes up.
Well, that's how it always does in Excel unless you, right, do some things.
Right, right, uh, well, a good trick is just to put a a format, a late. Format that cell where you don't want it and then it won't, it won't show up.
Yeah.
If it doesn't read it as a formula.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I didn't know what people were thinking, whether we were going to include that or not.
I I don't have a strong feeling either way, I mean, I think it's really useful for, wait, what are we talking about?
It's gonna be helpful for cola.
Percent increase, decrease.
Yeah.
Because people will just see cola, cola, cola instead of wondering what all of the little changes.
Right, yeah, I think it's really.
I mean, I don't think it's harmful.
If it fits, yeah, if it fits, it fits. That was my question.
You have a feeling or where the other is at?
Uh, no, I'd like to see what we're actually looking at on a fresh piece of paper.
Oh, here. I don't have that one printed yet, because I need it to tell if you're gonna approve of the thirty thousand.
Well, this might be just last week.
So they're just tired about having, instead of just increase, percent increase, decrease, that's a separate color. And the the discussion is about the divide by zero, like we can fix that easily.
Yeah, that was, that's confusing, I mean.
Well, it just wants to say that.
It was, to me, I think that was the numbers without ups or downs.
You did, just FY twenty four, get rid of this, haven't we historically had an increase, decrease, all?
Get rid of F and I.
The first increase.
Yeah, I think F has always made it, this is the new one. We haven't had a percentage. It's the percentage, so we're talking about.
On the action. Warrant that goes out on the floor of the board, it had that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
The, just the first one.
Yeah, it had this, but not the percent, just the amount.
The moderator doesn't usually read that column.
No, we only read the request.
We only read the request.
We don't read anything else.
It's just information for people.
The, the only.
Yeah, I'm looking at the twenty sixteen and it's not, but that's.
It's not, um, let me just, but I I know, I remember.
Oh, cause the one is just.
Been, let me just pull.
Yeah, there was.
It's the third calendar.
Why are you carrying around twenty sixteen?
Wait, you know what's honestly where we were, this is where we're in.
What's not there?
No, it's also in here, but.
What's not?
What's not there in his is special town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have it.
Okay, right, we don't put any of that, it stops right at the line, um, it's FY twenty three, FY twenty four, increase, decrease, right?
But it's going to include.
It's it's gonna stop at line one fifty five.
No, I think they're in the column. What tab do you want, your?
Does it show the special company?
I don't know, I'll turn that on.
Yeah.
On the schedule?
We weren't doing that for a couple of years, I think that's new, like the last two to three years.
Right.
But given it's some of the large sums that's in there, it feels warranted.
Yeah.
I like that column.
I do.
The only other change I would make, or my only other preference would be to, at the bottom, we're gonna have a percentage change to operating budget.
Right here.
I would compare it to what we asked for last year at town meeting. Rather than what we asked for at town meeting and what we asked for at special.
Are you saying the sum, what, say it again, you're saying what actually ended up being not just the town meeting percentage change, is that right?
So we applied a hundred eighteen thousand dollars in free cash last year during special town meetings.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's included, but we're only at, this is our annual town meeting, we may have special town meetings later in the year. So I would compare annual to annuals, but I don't think that there's a perfect way, that's just my preference.
I feel like it's appropriate to have that in, because if we're really comparing what we spent.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
That's appropriate, we did it, we can go to that amount, I mean, if it was in a second meeting, so if we're saying, look, this is what we spent in FY twenty three.
But my. And that's what I understand.
And we're comparing to FY twenty.
What I'm saying is that if we then go to ask special town meeting as we usually do for something. It's just, uh, there's no perfect way to do it.
Well, here's the thing, though, this, to me, the fact that this is so high because this was lower than it should.
Well, in part, but trees falling down and huge loss, it's run out.
Some of it was, like, sure, and you get there, there. I think, you know, what we've been trying to do as a finance committee is like, forget how we got there, but this is what it all was. And how do we springboard on that for next year, so I think a complete picture, because there have been years we haven't had special town meetings, we haven't needed to, right?
Right, very rarely, but I mean, and to the extent that we under budgeted fuel.
Right.
This is a better number to look at, to the extent that trees fell down last year and they may fall out again this year.
Yes. This is a better number.
It would be better to compare annual to annual and not the unexpected things that happen in the middle of the year.
But if we're comparing what we actually spent. Right, never mind what we approved, what we actually spent.
This is what we're spending this year twenty four, because we might expect, I'm not, it's not a goal I'm gonna die on, I'll let it go.
Okay, good, good, good.
Okay, so if you could just talk about the thirty thousand for the transfer station, then I can get the warrant ready for you to sign.
So, does everybody know what the deal is with that, for me?
I'm not fully up to date, Casella is not.
So, basically, yeah, so, but we did a contract where it was an optional renewal and not a staged renew. And they turned it down and they're, it's likely they're, it will be very high, um.
Buying up, Egramont paid, I mean, Marlborough paid, and the likelihood it's pretty high that it's gonna be a minimum of another thirty K of the money.
They also went out to four, they're going out to four other places, but as an offensive station for the choosing. We also found we did that the prior year, that the others were unreliable, there were issues, contracts weren't apples to apples comparison. So there's a reason we went with them for overall stability.
But that was when it was Valley, not just Sella.
But what I'm saying is, other contracts had issues to even compare.
Right. But we're still, we're still, we're putting it out there, there's Barbado, there's, there's.
Right, we're putting it out there.
Putting it out there, but we're gonna have to try to get quotes, but the likelihood it is very high that it's going to be substantially higher.
We know what date we will have our new money from that request.
When, when the likely get it, oh, make their.
They will know before town.
Yeah, so I'll know before town meeting to change it more, but I thought you might want to, to at least feel a little more realistic.
Yeah, so which line is this?
But we'll know their, before town, uh, town meeting.
Line four thirty three, um, for special station operations will go up to one twenty six, six sixty one.
Sorry, can you please repeat that number?
One, two, six, six, one, two, six, 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 one, for line four thirty three, transfer station operations, so it'll be an increase of.
Four thirty three, yes, that's right, one's, one, two, six, 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 one.
Six, six, one. An increase of thirty six thousand, six thirty six.
Huge.
I I, and you know, I I brought this up when we were gone, but I brought up that we can expect the increases for the transfer station operations to continue to go up rather worrisome way. Year over year in the, in the coming years.
And just this way, just a little background that Michelle asked a question earlier, well, can't we do something about, you know, reducing our food waste? And we're already in like the top five in the state, and most efficient, so there's not a lot of room to wiggle there, so. We are, of the food waste, I'll, whatever it is, the, what is it called?
Pardon?
The thing.
I'm not sure what you're asking, I'm sorry, it's a toward, it was over seen, it was ageable.
Right.
And we're actually pretty.
We're actually pretty good, but that doesn't mean there's not substantial room for improvement. Right, but that doesn't mean it could be done in a year, that's the budget, is my point. So we're working on other ways to improve it and hedge against it, but it's not a quick process.
Right.
Is it worth just reading through each request, I'll just do it quickly, and if anyone has a hold, then we'll talk about it, and if not, we'll just say that it's not?
Are we talking operating budget?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I know that I don't have anything, but we haven't already discussed it yet.
Okay, then, I don't need to do that, Mickey?
I just want you to confirm what is in writing in the final deal. For six, ten and, uh, seven hundred.
They haven't changed since we last talked about them, Mickey.
But I haven't seen them paid, so I just want to know.
So, library general, six, ten, is currently listed as thirty seven, four fifty five. Library wages is listed at sixty four, five sixty five. Library maintenance is fifteen, eight seventy five, and those are the three lines.
Okay, and the library loan?
Where is library loans?
Seven hundred? Get service.
Looking for it, uh, the library loan is listed at one thirty five.
We have work happening too.
Plus, I still have to transfer, I'm gonna knock twenty off of all of them when I transfer them.
Pardon?
Even I would make that joke, Melissa, I was like, oh, joy.
I would say how fast she could come up and.
Have we heard anything about the education and the consolidation that the state is trying to?
Just don't want me to be noisy at town meeting, do you?
No, um, it's gonna be, it's gonna, at some point later in the year, I guess.
No, we don't.
There was a meeting last night, I didn't make, didn't have to go now.
We said they're, we did, Donna did, and so that, um, they're still working on things, that there's still problems or issues with the.
So, it's not.
Shocking, dude.
But I think.
Well, we don't know about it, incidentally, we were.
Wow.
We were, we were.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, then, and then.
Somehow, during those three years.
Did that show up in the, did it go down?
Yeah.
How many lines?
Away to go.
So we did go down at one point, when we first built the transfer station.
Yeah, forty, thirty thousand dollars.
That went down.
Right, because there was all this stuff being diverted, but the cost of the municipal solid waste just keeps going up, plus. We're not getting as much for recyclables.
Seven, yeah, twenty fourteen. A hundred and seven, twenty fifteen.
But what happened is the prices for recyclables plummeted, um, and the price for municipal solid waste increased.
Yes.
So we're getting flat, less from the recyclables and paying more per ton for the municipal solid waste.
We just wanna make sure you're aware of, um, one thing, which is we're doing a budget briefing on, what thing?
May.
Second. So we have charts and graphs, and we'd love for you to be there. Michelle's getting refreshments, yeah, we're doing it here.
See what charges.
I, I think. I, I think it's probably four or five.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, but we just wanted to know you were doing, we were doing it, and, and just one other, this is my personal, my, so Susan, that question that you said, no, it's not the same thing, which means we do have video power over the, since you approved that, I'm not saying.
Yeah, you do, yeah, of course.
Yeah, forgot that.
Yeah.
Well.
That was totally in our.
I will say, thank you, yeah, yeah, all right, nothing else you need from us, right?
Unless, is there, are there any other money, money, before you leave, before you leave, uh, you should have an opinion on Article Six, which is on the article, probably, on article.
Oh, great, okay, sure, did you?
No, but that's not on there.
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah, yeah.
Wait, sorry, I have no problem with Article Six, which other one?
Well, but it's not on here.
It doesn't have anybody's on there, it doesn't say either.
Well, the article.
I know it should.
Oh, should they?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right, Melissa.
Okay.
We typically, what you're talking about.
We've been consistent about everything else, I mean, do, does the select board know about that?
On what?
Article Six, yes, everything, all the other money articles say how everybody was supporting it.
I support Article Six.
I support.
We all supported it.
It doesn't.
Doesn't, for either of us, somehow, we never voted on it.
Oh, I voted on it.
So I, the select board, I, I am in support, yes, on the.
As am I, Scott?
I'm in support of it.
Okay, so the select board will go on three zero.
The, I don't know, two, four, two zero, two zero.
Two, two zero.
Anything else?
You know, it's so funny, you could be through it so many times and then something like that, you know?
Right.
Uh, I mean, there's other things that are tangentially related to money, but that's really just the money.
No, but.
All the other ones, like they're.
Follow the.
Tell me about the money.
I just wanted to get that.
Okay, and, um, and just, it was, technically, um, we're not gonna say anything to Sean, he's fortunate, he had Article Six for himself, if someone's gonna let him know.
We'll let him know.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, transparencies.
I can, yeah.
For us to change.
That's why, I'm, yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Call it a buck. Yay!
Yeah, finance committee is a journey.
We're over a journey. We've been here too, goodbye, thank you.
Um, so, the town meeting warrant, um, we agreed to keep the map's works in a better shape than sorry, um, the.
Deleted the accidentally duplicated Article thirty one?
Uh, no, I moved it, that was the whole, I moved it, because.
Right, that's what, how it got accidentally duplicated, right?
No.
Oh.
It, that's just showing I deleted it, but I moved it.
Okay. The copy I had, had it twice, but, okay, that was the first, right, 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 okay. I see, okay, but, so it should now be?
The only question I have on Article, what's now, oh, and also the other thing was, is the numbers have, uh, changed.
Yeah, I'm just correcting.
I didn't even bother, because I knew it might.
Yeah.
Right there, um.
I don't see anything else.
Um.
I had some changes to the letter, but this was.
I see a period on the end of se- Article thirty two, the last, uh.
The line of thirty three. Okay.
The very end, section, uh, twenty one, four, and then also, it looks like for some reason, select word is deleted at the top of that page, which is confusing. Yeah.
It was a random period.
We're missing for a while.
Could we get, maybe we just.
There's no period at the end of that sentence. And what was the other thing besides the period?
It looks for some reason like, the select word is deleted, which is.
Oh.
To include the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, wiring inspector.
Hang on, she's, is that one that had period, and why did that get deleted? Comma, the select word, shall appoint? The comma, the. I don't know, we've established consolidated harmonization sections to include the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, wiring inspector, it's period, period, the select word shall appoint, the right, we're right, yeah. All right, where else?
Yeah, just those two.
Okay. Okay. All right, so fix those two periods, I'm gonna print out ones for you too.
Article thirty three, did we get any clarification on some type of a map showing those parcels?
Is this for, um, Chris, or for me?
Yes.
Yeah, just.
Yes, I have, um, it's gonna be included with the warrant, there's gonna be a, um, a document. There's gonna be a legal description and a map.
So that will be mailed out.
Yeah, I'll show you.
But it doesn't look like we're gonna have to have any of those issues take place.
Right, far as I understood, we weren't taking anything.
Right, even temporarily. Or acquired by purchase.
I'll print that out for you, so you can see it.
And the sec- Article thirty four says, plan is on file, where it shows that would not go, you know?
I'm gonna mail it with it.
Okay.
And my plan was to make sure that we had some information available, should questions be raised, I flagged a, a bunch of them, but I, we, we can wait till we finish this, if you will.
Yeah.
And you guys may have additional ones, so I just wanted to, I just had ones that I was pretty sure we should be prepared to answer questions regarding, there might not be any, and we don't have to say anything.
Yeah.
Well, if you're sitting up front, there'll be less.
That's kind of funny.
I'm smiling. My questions have already been answered.
Who might this be? Any idea?
Nope.
Nope, you don't have a gun, do you?
I go now.
No, it isn't, it's the select.
You gotta go in the other door, that way.
Is anybody here?
I don't think we're here.
Uh, I don't know, she might be in there, she might be out.
Excuse me, girl.
That's okay.
So no more changes to the warrant, and I will, I think we're good.
Can you, you have an emergency?
Well, somebody hit my car, and.
Left you a note?
Yeah, they left me the note.
So, this.
If you wanna have a seat, I can call them, give my papers to them, and she gets them down.
Have you ever known these? It's been a long search.
You say? I know, I was just looking at you, you got pretty pink, both of you.
This is not the pink, pink that it was.
Well, I'm pretty big on covering up Manhattan, it's, I don't, yeah.
I wore shirt down here, fifty, still burned a hundred.
Really?
No, it was hot, it was, definitely hot.
Even with the like SPF fifty four, that was, you get it?
It's supposed to be hotter tomorrow, the next day?
Yeah, I think right up until Friday.
And then, and then it's gonna drop Monday.
Yeah, I don't know, but if it's eighty on Friday, what the heck's it gonna be in July?
Eight.
Let's hope you're right, because.
It'll be seventy five.
Yeah, I'm thinking more like a hundred and five, and.
Yeah, maybe.
Bad news, we need the rain, actually.
Yeah, we do.
Well, God is enjoying it.
I know.
I've been raking, and it's like.
Yeah.
Dust. Oh, three weeks ago, there was three feet of snow.
Yeah.
And then it, it melted, and it, uh.
Just go. It's the wind, just sucked it right out. All right, while we're sitting here, I'm gonna list off my, my list here, I got, the open space and rec grant, I would like to, I'm, I'm gonna make sure we have what the grants are that we're applying for, and the, the kind of dollars and what the uses are, because I think people wanna know why we're spending three grand, um, I think we should have the list ready for the town hall repairs when people ask, um.
The list of proposed repairs that are needed.
Right, and what the cost will cost.
Is that actually gonna comprise?
Right.
And they'll pass somebody comprised of us?
Yeah, and we have, yeah, sure.
Who gave it to you?
Jim prepared it after examining everything and giving us estimate of what he thought it would cost, and we picked and cho- we, we left a few off, but we have a list of the ones we were going for. Um, I, I suspect we can have it, but Sean will be in, you know, the rescue tool, why we need the smaller one, and, um, we should probably also mention, we'll likely get some money back for selling the existing one. Um, the opioid settlement, where the money came from, and where we were planning to send it, so we have heard that, um, the SDRs, I'll be prepared with what towns have already accepted it, um, and what their revenue was from it, um, I imagine that, that the planning board will be prepared to answer it, but the change to the zoning rule and why we're making it, um.
On the zoning rule of?
The zoning rule is to fix the problem that arose, as you may recall, about camps here around, um, the noise by law, I imagine we're gonna get questions on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we should be prepared to feel.
Yeah, I've been across it in the grocery store on it, so you are.
Uh, people, people are concerned, but I don't, like, I think their concerns tend to be away, but maybe not, maybe they won't pass it, but we can explain why it's on there and why we don't think it'll be a problem. Um, and I'm sure we're already preparing for the land parcels by the bridge, people, people are very blind, that's on there. Those are the ones I flagged that we should be prepared for, do you guys have other ones you think might be an issue?
I'd like to talk to you about it probably next week after you get a chance to actually have final copies.
New memo.
Sure, uh, the one that we're assigning.
I'm gonna have you sign it tonight, you will.
Yeah. No, I don't need a signed one.
No, just.
I would just like the clean copy, because there's still, just up here.
Or, no, it's on there, but it, I think it probably should be fixed, Article Five, um, column C continues on to the next page.
Oh.
And it's really just not clear, and I know it's probably constantly changed as we've done different things, but at this point, it's probably safe to.
Well, we don't know where to be, because the budget doesn't.
We got, I got the topic of the budget.
Oh, okay.
Say, I think you have one with the budget.
No, I don't, he does, but that's fine, I don't need multiples, don't, do not print any more out, maybe re印.
I think just make it like form, do whatever you need to do.
Probably make the, the font in that one smaller.
Or can you make?
Maybe just see if I make it like a.
The column slightly different, it just says pursuant to, and then you continue, that's the only thing.
Oh, good wording, yeah, 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 yeah.
Me. I want.
Just that one, just this one thing at the top there.
Yeah.
It's just this one, right? Yeah, that is weird. Columns are a pain, I mean, uh, tables always do weird things for me, like pagination.
Same thing, Article fourteen, the supports are split up, so after that, maybe we just space it down to the next page, or maybe. Well, this is about with every page.
Oh, okay, I can't read it from here, but. The, what, the posted part?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I did that only because it was putting me on another page just for that information. Um, so when I fix that one, it puts another column, you know? Can you put it for its page, right? No, I'm trying, still trying to fix the table.
Yeah. That's right, you can't put one in the middle of it.
Okay, okay, I'll fix it with that. Oh, God, I gotta reset my app, bro, well, maybe proceed.
Well, did, well, no, because I got more.
You got one?
Yeah, no, we're just gonna do, um, I didn't, sorry, I realized you were going with your final, final, um, so we dealt with the column.
I dealt with the conservation, the first one, Article Five, yeah.
Just being split, so then Article fourteen is split?
But it may not be now, because of the change in the table.
It's not anymore.
Okay, great, perfect, and then Article twenty three, did they make a comment on opioids or not? I don't think they did.
No, they're like.
Article twenty six, I would just add three to zero, right, for the national export grant, we all support the national export grant, uh, article?
Yeah.
Good, okay, so we can add three to zero to that, so, um. Well, some of the stuff you have to know, so you find and put the budget in there, so.
Exactly, pagination is an awkward thing, if that's something you have a final copy, and you gotta do it page by page.
And on the select word, proves the article numbered.
And something else, wanting to know, or just the select words, of course, this article is on the second page, so.
We might just have the consuls return on that.
Hmm.
We might just have the, it might just end up at the next page, but I'd rather that than weird page rates.
Yeah, I agree.
Weird spacing is annoying with that.
It's just, there's no way you can do it except page by page, and you have to fix it, and then, you know, everything bumps and you gotta fix it again, in the end, there's no.
Like, maybe just later you messed it up.
Exactly.
If you guys are just gonna work on your spacing, I'm gonna let you go to it, okay? Make any changes in anything? Except Melissa, she's gonna change everything.
That's right, I'm gonna do that. We're cutting out the whole library, but it's.
Oh, God, yeah.
As soon as you leave. You wanna put up with me, but you did that, you know, it's, there's always that.
Well, and personally, I, I'd like to have the weapon, but, you know, it's a thing.
I could be loaded, handy, nice thing.
Um, I guess.
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut off the posted part.
If you're just figuring out spacing, do you mind if we?
Yeah, go ahead, you go.
So, three nineteen contract amendment, we have a letter signed, or do you?
Yeah, so I didn't make copies for the three nineteen.
Okay, nice.
This is just for the additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it's just adjusted, so I'm.
Okay. Motion to approve the contract amendment for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the three nineteen grant.
Second.
That's the Hugh Byrow grant?
Hugh Byrow grant, project, yeah, any other questions on that? Uh, we'll call a vote, yes?
Yes.
And yes, she named a disagreement. Eight, it was.
Wayne.
Eight, twelve.
It's what, the?
Twelve.
Four twelve?
Four twelve.
Four twelve, twenty, twenty twenty three? So, new Marlboro mattresses.
Yes, okay.
This is, this is unanticipated business, by the way.
Yes, it is, so, here is the, the short version, I will.
What is this about?
This is about, there is, this is about the transfer station.
Figure that.
So. Yeah, starting about five years ago, the BEP started to make plans to ban the disposal of mattresses in municipal solid waste, it, what, everybody was told about it. We, when we redid the transfer station, we bought the container that has the mattresses with the grant, and a number of other towns were included in that for a year. At the end of that year, the other towns were kind of on their own, for reasons known to. For reasons known to New Marlboro, New Marlboro never proceeded to get themselves a container. And now the mattress ban went into effect last fall. And New Marlboro doesn't have a container and a former member of the select board and transfer station committee on his own recognizance spoke in Marlboro and told them that they were welcome to use our transfer station to continue to dump mattresses. And it came to an end this weekend, which the transfer station had, we didn't have much to do, right? But he went ahead and spoke with them and this weekend, somebody from Marlboro showed up with five mattresses. We now have only one person working the transfer station, we haven't been able to get another person there. Five mattresses was a lot for, for him to contend with on a busy weekend day. I, I understand that Marlboro has, for whatever their reasons are, chosen not to go ahead and get a container, but containers are available. And while in a pinch, I would understand, I don't see why we should be continuing to. It, it's a problem for us, we don't have enough staffing, we're looking for staffing, we haven't been able to find anyone, we got someone, they spent a week, they left. Um, it's a burden on us to, to take them, like, it's a nice thing in theory, but, so the question is, what do we do? Do we say to Marlboro, hey, guys, we understand you're, you know, we'll take them home day first, but you, you really need to go ahead and get yourselves a container, we know what's coming. It's not a surprise, we're sorry you didn't plan for it, but we don't have the staffing to continue to take them for you. It particularly can be a problem because you can't just take them and unload them. As you know, they're heavy, also you have to check them because if they're in poor condition, you can't recycle. And then you have to pay to put them in bulky ways.
Well, I think if we're handling somebody else's old mattress, it should be a minimum fee, fifty bucks or something like that. Just even take the thing.
So right now, for our residents.
Whether we can get rid of it or not.
So for our residents, it's twenty dollars.
For a mattress.
For a mattress.
Well, then it's gotta be a minimum of that.
Correct.
Somebody else, but we also wanna, I would say we tell them, look, take care of your own.
I, I sort of feel like that too.
So when we, um, send in a container full of mattresses, what does the town have to pay, how much?
I think. I, I think we, with the numbers, and I think we're, we actually, at twenty dollars a mattress. Um, and we don't know what's gonna happen to these transfer fees, but, um, we pay, we have been paying three hundred dollars for a hall, plus ten dollars per mattress, about seventy on the mattress. Uh, bit on the container, so that's about a thousand, and we've been charging, uh, twenty dollars a mattress. So that would be like fourteen hundred, and there were seventy on there. So I think it works out to about four bucks that we clear on a mattress. However, A, we don't know if those numbers are totally go up, they're not, we are.
Well, I just bet they are.
B, there's the staffing issue.
So what if we?
Because right now we only have Bill up there and the five mattresses was a bit over.
So what if we, what if we said, because we are uh, covering costs at the twenty dollars, what if we said it would be twenty-five or thirty if you come from another town, if you come from Marlboro? And then that way we are getting, the town is getting something in return for the, for a service that we're providing.
As long as it, I mean.
Well, we don't wanna make a precedent where all of a sudden twenty-five is cheaper than stockage. Somebody's saying, oh, yeah, I live in Marlboro, but I have three mattresses from.
And then there's a second thing, if they can't, are they prepared, they're gonna have to pay more to put it in bulkies. Right, and.
Well, they can't, if, if it's not in good enough condition, the, the way that I would set it up for me, I would say if you're from New Marlboro and we wanna work this intertown deal, it's thirty dollars a mattress, it's higher by ten dollars, so we're covering costs and we're getting something for staffing and overhead. And then I would say if it can't go in a mattress, then you just have to leave.
I, it's just, I'm worried about what that's gonna be for Bill, right? Like, he's telling people, sorry, your mattress is too dirty, I can't take it. And do we wanna put him in a position where he's now arguing with someone from Marlboro?
Yeah, that's just what I would do.
I know, I, I kind of agree with you, but I also feel like Marlboro needs to.
Cut the rope. They need the staff.
They, they, they know that it's a problem, they knew, they had years to plan for it, and they chose not to.
Well, but that needs to end immediately.
I sort of feel like they're taking it then, we hope about in a pinch, but the pinch is over. Right, the ban started last fall.
No, for all means.
I, I, I kinda feel like they should.
Sign a note, a letter to them, yeah, well, thank you very much, but it's over, no more. All your constituents.
They, they, I mean.
They gotta figure out where they're taking them, it's not coming to us.
Yep, and I don't, it's like, they could get one in a matter of days. Jim says that it's not hard to get a container at this point, they have decided.
Why is it still a subject, you know, why do we, why not just tell them what's over?
So let's just tell them that we can't take the mattresses at this time and I will call them and I will make a point of saying to Freddie that it's important that he realizes that Ken is not a member of the select board and actually is not empowered to speak for the town on these matters. And that if he has, on any matter, and if he has any questions, he should be talking either to a member of the, you know, select board or with the town administrator and that that's the, it's the ruling of the select board that the town in Marlboro is responsible for its own municipal solid waste.
Yeah, I see.
Well, it's not, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be that, uh, it's just we require moderate transfer station sticker to go to the moderate and use the transfer, moderate transfer station, it's that simple. And we never, the town never granted, as far as I've been concerned, anyway, so.
I like the way you phrased it.
Was there a motion?
Uh, well, you made a motion, was a motion, uh, that the select board at this time believes that the moderate transfer station is for moderate town residents with a moderate transfer station sticker on.
Yeah.
Does that sum it up correctly, Scott?
Well, it sums it up to that point, if you really wanna get more specifics, they keep your lousy mattresses to you, so.
Okay, so we'll go with Susan's motion. And, uh.
Is there a second?
I'm not waiting, that guy, two weeks.
Hey, we've got four weeks.
No, I don't, I'm not coming to the last one, donating my money back to the town.
Um.
Well, what if we don't meet next week? Perfect, then I'll.
So, is there a second?
I think he's thinking because it's the maze, doesn't wanna break it up, right?
Okay.
Break what up?
Is he gonna get partial payment?
No, I'm careless about family.
Yeah, really, so there's a second, all in favor? Yes, I, two eyes, are you?
I'm, I'll, I'll be no.
Okay, two to one. Um, he thinks we should be kind to them and help them out.
Well, fine, be kind, but charge them.
Well, yeah, but that's thirty, thirty-five, that's why I would.
Once you charge somebody, then how do you keep somebody from another town saying, oh, from stockage?
Well, but if they pay us thirty, thirty, thirty-five, forty, whatever you want, and we're making money on it, why are you gonna turn it down?
If I had, if we had just two people working up there.
But then if you start having Snodgrass in Marlboro and Sheffield coming or whatever, the impact on Bill, since we can't find anybody else.
That, that's true.
So he told us that two weeks, he's not working Sundays anymore, so there may be nobody up there on Sundays.
Extra halls, that's full, we just raised.
If we have, we fully staffed.
Okay, we, we voted, that's right.
Right, we voted, we're good.
Okay, small communities grant contract.
They're gonna give us the, um, twelve thousand dollars, we're responsible for the free that's on the town meeting to get the, um.
So I might.
So we did got the grant.
We did got the grant?
Next, okay.
Oh, sorry, which grant was this?
This was the one to get the, I'm taking it, that's the.
The open space plan.
Oh, excellent.
So motion to accept the, um, small communities grant contract for the open space plan, which the town's responsible for three thousand dollars, which is on the one. Is there, and there you missed twelve, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, um, there's no comments or questions from public. Uh, do we wanna sign the warrant?
Do I, one other thing there, I guess it's been for the, here's, um, two other items. Can you sign your renewal application for the notary, um, insurance, um, for renewal?
Yeah.
Same stuff as last year.
So I would move to renew the notary insurance for the notaries that work for the town.
Second.
Which only less or not?
Just an eight, right, so it should go down a little bit.
Um.
Although I think Chris is planning to get his notary, so we should plan for that.
Yeah, there's a second, uh, is there any, any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes?
Yes.
And then I just wanted to let you know that, um, the tree company, John Fields also said that they will not renew the contracts. It's gonna cost them four hundred dollars more, um, per day. So Jim and I will be putting that back up there as well.
Okay, I mean.
He raised this rate, four hundred a day.
Yeah, he's saying they can't with prevailing wage rates, um, keep at the prices.
Yeah, that more costs.
I mean, I, I, we should maybe be hoping getting contracts that are longer rather than having these one-year contracts with a renewal.
Right.
I mean, that, that's what I would suggest, they may not be willing to, right? But if we can get the longer contract, it's probably better for us. And the way things are changing, they may not be willing to, you can ask.
Maybe at some point, the inflation will.
Yeah.
Well, a good problem is, doesn't, I think, I don't know that much about that stuff, but it seems problematic.
I don't. Do you think? Um, just to be clear, do, do you guys want me to draft a letter to New Marlboro and then when we come in, if we're not meeting next week, you just sign the letter so that?
If you just, if you, I think if you just tell Freddie, um, you know, the select board never, I, I can tell Freddie too, I mean.
We'll all tell Freddie.
We all tell Freddie. Um, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's.
We said we'll try.
I don't think, I don't think it's letter worthy, because it's just, you know, we never said you could do this and.
Right, and we're just reiterating that.
You need a moderate transfer station sticker to, right, is that the first time that someone tried to do it?
No, it's been happening.
Okay. But, and I mean, actually, you need to tell it's Bill.
I'll make sure, we won't even go into what happened this weekend, because it's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's not like, he said it was actually eight months. Um, so.
One person?
Yeah.
What are they doing?
And that particular select board member, he was there to make sure that Bill took them, and Bill told the guy.
What, select board number?
Former select board member, sorry.
Of the town, all right?
Yes, the former select board member in question, mentioned earlier.
So, yeah, so as far as that goes, um, as far as that goes, I don't think we need to sign a letter because it's, we never signed a letter saying they could.
Okay. Well, you did. Right.
And if you want to talk to Freddie.
I'm happy to talk to Freddie.
Talk to Freddie and then, and tell Bill. And we should, I mean, we never told him, we never said in the first place.
Right, it was like a little, you know, all-town thing, what can I say?
Um, so signing the warrants.
Okay, do we have anything else?
What do we, three, seven, seven, uh. Oh, do we want to do the minutes at three twenty-nine?
Oh.
What's that here?
No, you want.
See, I took it off the other pages and I looked at them and I was like, what, what am I?
Oh. He was asking about the.
I took it off the other ones. And so, do you want me to clean them up and do all of them?
Yeah, do you want us to clean?
I'm just gonna do a clean.
I mean, look, I didn't have to, we're paying for what, how many to get? Hundreds.
Three twenty-nine?
Three twenty-nine.
Now.
So what happened, Susan?
And we didn't have the other one, right?
What happened, Susan, with three twenty-nine is you sent me yours last week.
Right.
At the meeting and I made some edits, which I guess I'll just forward you and maybe we can do it all over.
Yeah, go for it, yep.
We can save paper here. So I didn't have any. I mean, I, I'm assuming to accept all of your edits, oh, great, error.
Let me tell, let me look at it for that one. Oh, second, show it. Why, what are you doing? No, I just, I don't understand why this happens, look, error downloading, fuck, but not patch the fuck, my name, sometimes it just decides, it won't, I'm just gonna read. Do you think the order posted really need to have original signatures on it? Like, you just print one that you sign instead of six copies?
Just, why don't we just reset? I like that.
Previous one.
Six.
Yes, or seven, whatever we do, let's just do it how we've done it.
Okay.
I just had to read down.
Cause, cause it's gonna take, uh, Susan and I a minute to do the, to do the minutes.
Right, so.
So here you can see, oh, you, you can see on yours. And you, you know what?
I just had to read.
If you didn't wanna do it, you can show only mine.
Ah, lovely.
Yep. Huh, how do you do just only yours?
Oh, I don't know if you have that.
Do you know how to show all the shows, kids?
You went to show markup, specific people.
I have simple markup, all markup, no markup.
Get rid of that, uh, dropdown.
Oh, markup options.
For viewers.
For viewers.
Yeah, uncheck yourself.
Oh, you did the opposite for me. Gotcha.
Yeah, um, if, unless there's a reason to, we won't meet next week. Oh, and to speak to another agenda item I never got to was town meeting preparations.
Right.
There's nothing crazy, but I'll talk to the police about managing party, that you should get someone else. We'll set up a chair, it's gonna be in the fire station.
Right, yay.
Get up the electronic voting. And I'm trying to think, oh, we talked about having sandwiches, but I don't know that, that will happen.
What? You, you made a face?
No.
Okay.
Do you want sandwiches?
I, no. I didn't want to know. Beer. Grab some beer. I'm gonna go kitchen now.
Not yet. Yeah, so I, I looked through all of yours, obviously, and I.
Yep, yep.
Oh, so if you, you go through.
I'm just looking at yours.
It's a Saturday night.
First seventeen?
Nine.
May sixth.
Nine, six, ten, nine.
Thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yeah, I think I had even said that.
Yeah, you wanted to delete, that's why I deleted.
Yeah, okay.
You said should this be.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Think I left mine out. Uh, does com, com have two letters?
Yes, they should, in my opinion, because commission.
Should we just make it conservation permission and not abbreviate it?
I don't know, people use concom, I'm not entirely opposed to it.
I'm, I'm okay, you're right, I don't care. This part I.
In the middle, how do I get in the middle?
Okay.
So, again, the motion approved the March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes as amended.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's two.
I have blue ink.
Vote to approval.
Well, I'm gonna use blue.
We don't have to, we can use all different colors.
Really?
Yeah, sure.
I'm having numbers, I'm having, I'm having numbers.
Okay, so.
I have six different names.
We approved the minutes of three twenty-nine, Melissa, and the, the version that I sent to you with Susan, my edits, all the edits are good.
I'm liking this.
Yeah, I'll do it that way then.
So much paper saved.
Well, in some areas today, we were good.
Yeah, well, there's been so much.
I just figure.
No, I know, and, and you're right, all the things will print, and you know what, like, it's just tricky. No, I know, and, and you're right, all the things we'll print, and you know what, like, it's just tricky when you're.
It'll be less paper when they print them too, because they're gonna drop double sided.
And, and it's hard when there's formatting above, right? Like, there's just no way to avoid that irritating fact. Look, we each have our own color.
We need it to be blue instead of fifty shade to gray.
Whoa. Great.
Okay, goodness.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Wait, next meeting?
Well, we can do that over email too, but, uh, does anyone wanna meet next week?
I'm all for it.
If, if something, if.
Before you do that, let me see if I have.
If, I mean, if something comes up too, I'm not ever pointing out a question, I'm just saying.
Yeah, if we really need it to meet, we could just let it roll.
So the only thing you need to do before Scott takes off on us tonight is prove the sick time and holiday policy.
Oh, thought it was done, but you're right, it's not done, right?
So if you wanna meet next week, then that, or, or push it up to following week.
Can we, can we push it, we can push it up for the following week, we just need to actually finalize with two of us, the sick time and holiday leave are part-time.
Someone did that.
We talked about it, but we never finalized the language.
Okay, and that has been now finalized, so we can read it.
Um, and I, can we make sure we send Scott a copy of the current language?
Let me just make sure there's nothing else for next week.
They deleted my account.
Yeah, that's, if that's all, if you wanted to skip next week and do the twenty-sixth.
Sure.
Let's do it.
Well, that also just puts us closer to the actual meeting where we can practice.
So that would be, we're gonna skip this, we can go to the following week.
Yep.
Skip the nineteenth, twenty-sixth.
What, are we meeting next week?
No.
No. Skip next week.
Yeah.
Go to the following week, which is twenty-sixth.
This is twelve today.
Yeah.
We have been in time for the month, I didn't realize that.
You know, you'll be old.
Unless, every day.
Unless something important comes up.
Unless something important, but that's always the case. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, vote?
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-two PM unanimously.
Gentlemen, you rock, you did it, yay.